All right, everybody, welcome to study sessions. Last week, Friday, we completed reading through our inaugural text, being the ancient language of the soul, the mystic knowledge of mantra. You can go back and watch previous videos to follow along with the reading through this text. You can also pick it up, a copy of the text from my website, the mystic knowledge at our website. And there you'll see under new book sales, listing detailing information about that book. The next book we're going to read is by author Yogi Ramacharaka or William Walker Atkinson. It is the fourteen lessons in yogi philosophy. Then from there, we're going to continue on with the rest being advanced course. The series and lessons to much yoga, half the yoga, Nani yoga. Then go back to the first one here, Hindu yoga, science of breath, and then Mr. Christianity and the rest of the text in the Ramacharaka series. This is on our website under ebook library dash one, and you can download all of these texts for free and read along as well as make any notes or highlights bullet points so that we can come back and discuss them in a future open discussion or a separate book study class. So let's go into the text. I will be reading from the same PDF version that is available on our website, so you can download it and follow along as well. So fourteen lessons in yogi philosophy and Oriental occultism by Yogi Ramacharaka, author of Science of Breath, Hatha Yoga, etc. And you have a quote here to open up the text from the book Light on the Path by the author Mabel Collins. I think it's very appropriate that we begin this second text in our study sessions series with a quote from Light on the Path, because that is the text that I would like us to open up next year with, as well as the themes presented in that text, that being on discipleship. I would like us to utilize that as a theme for twenty twenty two. So stay tuned for that. It's a short little book, but it is quite powerful. And hopefully we'll be able to make it through that text. So in January twenty twenty two, I would like us to begin the study session series and that year with the study on light in the path. But the opening quote is thus, know, oh disciple, that those who have passed through the silence and felt its peace and retained its strength, they long that you shall pass through it also. Therefore, in the hall of learning, when he is capable of entering there, the disciple will always find his master. Today we are scheduled to read through lessons one, two, and three. That being the first, that's one being the first three principles. Lesson two, the mental principles, and lesson three, the spiritual principles. We may not get through all of that, so we'll see how we offer time when we get to the second principle. You may leave three and four for next time, but we'll see. Chapter one, the first lesson, the first three principles. It is with no ordinary feelings that we address ourselves to our students of the yogi class of nineteen oh four. We see, as they perhaps do not, that to many of them, this series of lessons will be as a seed planted in fertile soil, which will in due time put forth sprouts, which will force their way gradually into the sunlight of consciousness, where they will put forth leaves, blossom, and fruit. Many of the fragments of truth which we presented to you will not be recognized by you at this time, but in years to come, you will recognize the verity of the impressions which will be conveyed to you in these lessons. And then, and then only will we do make these truths your own. We intend to speak to you just as if you were gathered before us in person and as if we were standing before you in the flesh. We feel sure that the bond of sympathy between us will soon grow so strong and real that you, that as you read our words, you will feel our presence almost as strongly as if we were with you in person. We will be with you in spirit. And according to our philosophy, the student who is in harmonious sympathy with his teachers really establishes a psychic connection with them and is in consequence enabled to grasp the spirit of the teaching and to receive the benefit of the teacher's thought in a degree impossible to one who merely reads the words in cold print. We are sure that the members of the class of nineteen oh four will get into harmony with each other and with us from the very start, and that we will obtain results that will surprise even ourselves, and that the term of the class will mark a wonderful spiritual growth and unfoldment for many of the class. This result would be impossible where the class composed of the general public in which the adverse thought vibrations of many would counteract or at least retard the impelling force generated in the minds of those who are in sympathy with the work. But we will not have this obstacle to overcome. As the class has been recruited only from that class of students who are interested in the occult. The announcements sent out by us have been worked in such a way as to attract the attention only of those of for whom they were intended. The mere sensation hunters and the fattest have not been attracted by our call. While those for whom the call was intended have heard and have hastened to communicate with us. As the poet has sung, where I pass, all my children know me. The members of the class having been attracted to us and we to them will form a harmonious body working with us to the common end of self-improvement, growth, development, and unfoldment. The spirit of harmony and unity of purpose will do much for us. And the united thought of the class coupled with our own will be of a tower, will be a tower of strength. And each student will receive the benefit of it and will be strengthened and sustained thereby. We will follow the system of instruction of the East rather than that of the Western world. In the East, the teacher does not stop to prove each statement or theory as he makes or advances it, nor does he make a blackboard demonstration of spiritual truths, nor does he argue with his class or invite discussion. On the contrary, his teaching is authoritative. And he proceeds to deliver his message to his students as it was delivered to him without stopping to see whether they all agree with him. He does not care whether his statements are accepted as truth by all, for he feels sure that those who are ready for the truth which he teaches will intuitively recognize it. And as for the others, if they are not prepared to receive the truth, no amount of argument will help matters. When a soul is ready for a spiritual truth and that truth or part of it is uttered in its presence or presented to its attention by means of writings, it will intuitively recognize and appropriate it. The Eastern teacher knows that much of his teachings is but the planting of seed and that for every idea which the student grasps at first, there will be a hundred which will come into the field of conscious recognition only after the lapse of time. We do not mean that the Eastern teachers insist upon the student blindly accepting every truth that is presented to him. On the contrary, they instruct the pupil to accept as truth only that which he can prove for himself. As no truth is truth to one until he can prove it by his own experiments. But the student is taught that before many truths may be so proven, he must develop and unfold. The teacher asks only that the student have confidence in him as a pointer out of the way. And he says in effect to the student, this is the way, enter upon it. And on the path, you will find the things of which I have taught you. Handle them, weigh them, measure them, taste them, and know for yourself. When you reach any point of the path, you will know as much of it as did I or any other soul at that particular stage of the journey. But until you reach a particular point, you must either accept the statements of those who have gone before or reject the whole subject of that particular point. Accepting nothing as final until you have proven it. But if you are wise, you will profit by the advice and experience of those who have gone before. Every man must learn by experience, but men may serve others as pointers of the way. At each stage of the journey, it will be found that those who have progressed a little further on the way have left signs and marks and guideposts for those who follow. The wise men will take advantage of those signs. I do not ask for blind faith, but only for confidence until you are able to demonstrate for yourselves the truth that I am passing on to you as they were passed on to me by those who went before. We ask the student to have patience. Many things which will appear dark to him at first will be made clear as we progress. The constitution of man. Man is a far more complete being than is generally imagined. He has not only a body and soul, but he is a spirit possessing a soul, which soul has several vehicles for expression. These several vehicles being of different degrees of density, the body being the lowest form of expression. These different vehicles manifest upon different planes, such as the physical plane, the astral plane, etc., all of which will be explained as we proceed. The real self is pure spirit, a spark of the divine fire. This spirit is encased within numerous sheets, which prevent its full expression. As man advances in development, his consciousness passes from the lower planes to the higher, and he becomes more and more aware of his higher nature. The spirit contains within it all potentialities. And as man progresses, he unfolds new powers, new qualities into the light. The yogi philosophy teaches that man is composed of seven principles, is a sevenfold creature. The best way to think of man is to realize that the spirit is the real self and that the lower principles are but confining sheets. Man may manifest upon several planes, that is, the highly developed man, as the majority of men of this age can manifest only upon the lower planes. The higher planes not having as yet been reached by them, although every man, no matter how undeveloped, possesses the seven principles potentially. The first five planes have been attained by man, the sixth by a few, the seventh by practically none of this race at this time. The seven principles of man. The seven principles of man as known to yogi philosophy are herewith stated, English terms being substituted for Sanskrit words so far as may be. Seven, spirit. Six, spiritual mind. Five, intellect. Four, instinctive mind. Three, prana or vital force. Two, astro body. One, the physical body. We will briefly run over the general nature of each of these seven principles that the student may understand future references to them, but we will defer our detailed treatment of the subject until later on in the lessons. One, the physical body. Of all the seven principles of man, the physical body is of course the most apparent. It is the lowest in the scale and is the crudest manifestation of the man. But this does not mean that the physical should be despised or neglected. On the contrary, it is a most necessary principle for the growth of man in his present stage of development, the temple of the living spirit, and it should be carefully tended and cared for in order to render it a more perfect instrument. We have but to look around us to see how the physical bodies of different men show the different degrees of development under mental control. It is the duty of each developed man to train his body to the highest degree of perfection in order that it may be used to advantage. The body should be kept in good health and condition and trained to obey the orders of the mind rather than to rule the mind, as is so often the case. The care of the body under the intelligent control of the mind is an important branch of yoga philosophy, yogi philosophy, and is known as hatha yoga. We are preparing a little textbook upon hatha yoga, which will soon be ready for the press that will give the yogi teachings upon this most important branch of self-development. The yogi philosophy teaches that the physical body is built up of cells, each cell containing within it a miniature life which controls its actions. These lives are really bits of intelligent mind and of a certain degree of growth, which enable the cells to perform their work properly. These bits of intelligence are of course subordinate to the control of the central mind of the man and will readily obey orders from headquarters, given either subconsciously or consciously. The cell intelligences manifest a perfect adaptation for their particular work. The selective action of the cells, extracting from the blood that nourishment needed and rejecting that which is not required, is an instance of this intelligence. The process of digestion, assimilation, etc., shows the intelligence of the cells either separately or collectively in groups. The healing of wounds, the rush of the cells to the points where they are most needed, and hundreds of other examples known to the student of philosophy, of psychology, sorry. All mean to the yogi student examples of the life within each, sorry, physiology, physiology. All mean to the yogi student examples of the life within each atom. Each atom is to the yogi a living thing leading to its independent life. These atoms combine into groups for some end, and the group manifests a group intelligence. As long as it remains a group, these groups again combining in turn and forming bodies of a more complex nature, which serve as vehicles for higher forms of consciousness. When death comes to the physical body, the cells separate and scatter, and that which we call decay sets in. The force which has held the cells together is withdrawn, and it becomes free to go its own way and form new combinations. Some go into the body of the plants in the vicinity and eventually find themselves again in the body of an animal. Others remain in the organism of the plant. Others remain in the ground for a time. But the life of the atom means incessant and constant change. As a leading writer has said, death is but an aspect of life, and the destruction of one material form is but a prelude to the building up of another. We would not devote further space to the consideration of the physical as that is a subject by itself, and then our students are no doubt anxious to be led into the subjects with which they are not quite so familiar. So we will leave this first principle and pass on to the second, wishing however again to remind the student that the first step in yogi development consists of the mastery of the physical body and its care and attention. We will have more to say of this subject before we are through with this course. Number two, the astro body. The second principle of man is not nearly so well known as its physical brother, although it is closely connected with the latter and is its exact counterpart in appearance. The astral body has been known to people in all ages and has given rise to many superstitions and mysteries owing to a lack of knowledge of its nature. It has been called the ethereal body, the fluidic body, the double, the wraith, the doppelganger, etc. It is composed of matter of a finer quality than that composing our physical bodies, but matter nonetheless. In order to give you a clear idea of what we mean, we will call your attention to water, which manifests in several well-known forms. Water at a certain temperature is known as ice, a hard, solid substance. At a little higher temperature, it assumes its best known form, which we call water. At a still higher temperature, it escapes in the form of a vapor, which we call steam. Although the real steam is invisible to the human eye, it becomes apparent only when it mixes with the air and has this temperature lowered a little, when it becomes vapor visible to the eye and which vapor we call steam. The astral body is the best counterpart of the physical body and may be separated from it under certain circumstances. Ordinarily, conscious separation is a matter of considerable difficulty, but in persons of a certain degree of physical, of psychical development, the astral body may be detached and often goes on journeys. To the clairvoyant vision, the astral body is seen looking exactly like its counterpart, the physical body, and united to it by a slender silken cord. The astral body exit exists sometime after the death, after the death of the person to whom it belongs. And under certain circumstances, it is visible to living persons and is called a ghost. There are other means whereby the spirits of those who have passed on may become manifest, and the astral shell, which is sometimes seen after it has been slowed off by the soul which has passed on, is in such cases nothing more than a corpse of finer matter than its physical counterpart. In such cases, it is possessed of no life or intelligence and is nothing more than a cloud seen in the sky bearing a resemblance to a human form. It is a shell, nothing more. The astral body of a dying person is The astral body of a dying person is sometimes projected by an earnest desire and is at such times seen as friends and relatives with whom he is in sympathy. There are many cases of this kind of record. And the student probably is aware of occurrences of this kind. We will have more to say about the astral body and astral shells in other lessons in this course. We will have occasion to go into further detail when we reach the subject of the astral plane and in fact, the astral body will form a part of several lessons. The astral body is invisible to the ordinary eye, but is readily perceived by those having clairvoyant power to a certain degree. Under certain circumstances, the astral body of a living person may be seen by friends and others, the mental condition of the persons and the observer having much to do with the matter. Of course, the trained and developed occultist is able to project his astral body consciously and may make it appear at will, but such powers are rare and are acquired only after a certain stage of development is reached. The adept sees the astral body rising from the physical body as the hour of death approaches. It is seen hovering over the physical body, to which it is bound by a slender thread. When the thread snaps, the person is dead. And the soul passes on carrying with it the astral body, which in turn is discarded as the physical body has been before. It must be remembered that the astral body is merely a finer grade of matter and that it is merely a vehicle for the soul, just as is the physical, and that both are discarded at the proper time. The astral body, like the physical, disintegrates after the death of the person. And persons of a psychic nature sometimes see the dissolving fragments around cemeteries in the shape of violet light. We are merely calling attention to the different vehicles of the soul of man, his seven principles. And we must hasten on to the next principle. We would like to speak to you of the interesting phenomenon with the ego leaving the physical body in the astral body while one is asleep. We would like to tell you just what occurs during sleep and how one may give orders to his astral self to gain certain information or to work out certain problems while he is wrapped in sleep. But that belongs to another phase of our subject. It must press on after merely wetting your appetite. We wish you to get these seven principles well fixed in your mind so that you may be able to understand the terms when we use them later on. Number three, prana or vital force. We have said something of prana in our little book, The Science of Breath, which many of you have read. As we said in that book, prana is universal energy. But in our consideration of it, we will confine ourselves to that manifestation of prana which we call vital force. This vital force is found in all forms of life, from the amoeba to man. From the most elementary form of plant life to the highest form of animal life. Prana is all pervading. It is found in all things having life. And as the occult philosophy teaches that life is in all things, in every atom, the apparent lifelessness of some things being only a lesser degree of manifestation, we may understand that prana is everywhere, in everything. Prana is not the ego, but is merely a form of energy used by the ego in its material manifestation. And the ego departs from the physical body in what we call death. The prana being no longer under the control of the ego responds only to the orders of the individual atoms or their groups, which have formed the physical body. And as the physical body disintegrates and is resolved back to its original elements, each atom takes with it sufficient prana to enable it to form new combinations. The unused prana returning to the great universal storehouse from whence it came. Prana is in all all forms of matter, and yet it is not matter. It is the energy or force which animates matter. We have gone into the matter of prana in a little book previously referred to. And we do not wish to take up the student's time in repeating what we said there. But before taking up the next principle, we wish to direct the student's attention to the fact that prana is the force underlying magnetic healing, much of mental healing, absence treatment, et cetera. That which has been spoken of by many as human magnetism is really prana. In Science of Breath, we have given you directions for increasing the prana in your system, distributing it over the body, strengthening each part and organ and stimulating every cell. It may be directed toward relieving pain in oneself and others by sending it to the affected part. A supply of prana extracted from the air. It may be projected to a distance so far as to affect other persons. The thought of the projector sends forth the colors the prana gathered, sends forth and colors the prana gathered for the purpose and finds lodgment in the psychic organism of the patient. Like the Marconi waves, it is invisible to the eye of man with the exception of certain persons who have attained a high degree of clairvoyant power. It passes through intervening obstacles and seeks the person attuned to receive it. This transferring of prana under the direction of the will is the underlying principle of thought transference, telepathy, et cetera. One may surround himself with an aura of prana colored with strong positive thought, which will enable him to resist the adverse thought ways of others and which will enable him to live serene in an atmosphere of antagonistic and inharmonious thought. We advise students to reread that portion of Science of Breath which deals with the use of prana. We propose going into great detail regarding this phase of the subject during the course of these lessons, but Science of Breath gives a good fundamental idea of the nature of prana and the methods of its use, and students would do well to refresh their minds on this subject. We wish to weary you by this description of each of the seven principles. And we are aware that you are impatient to enter into the more interesting phases of the subject. But it is absolutely necessary that you obtain a clear idea of those seven principles in order that you may understand that which follows and to obviate necessity of your being sent back to relearn the lessons which you have skipped. We had this idea in mind when we started this class in November nineteen oh three. Instead of waiting until January nineteen oh four, and we give you the November and December lessons as good measure so as to be able to reach the more interesting part of the subject by the January lesson. We will leave the subject of prana and will pass on to the next principle, but we trust that she will not leave this part of the lesson until you have acquired a clear idea of prana and its qualities and uses. Study your Science of Breath until you understand something of prana. The mental principles. The Western reader who has studied the writings of some of the recent Western psychologists will recognize in the instinctive mind certain attributes of the so-called subjective or subconscious minds spoken of so frequently by the said writers. These writers discovered in man these characteristics as well as certain higher phases of the mind, coining from the spiritual mind. And without stopping to investigate further, they advanced a new theory that man is possessed of two minds, i.e. the objective and subjective. Whereas some may have turned them the conscious and subconscious. This was all very well so far as it went, but these investigators set the conscious mind aside and bundled all the rest into their subconscious or subjective mind. Ignoring the fact that they were mixing the highest and lowest qualities of mind and putting them in the same class and leaving the middle quality by itself. The subjective mind and the subconscious theories are very confusing as a student finds groups together the most sublime flashes of genius in the silliest nothings of the man of low development. The mind of the latter being almost altogether subjective. To those who have read up on these theories, we would say that such reading will materially help them to understand the three mental principles of man if they will remember that the conscious or objective mind corresponds very nearly with the intellect principle of the yogi philosophy. And that the lowest portions of the subjective or subconscious mind are what the yogis term the instinctive mind principle. While the higher and sublime qualities which the Western writers have noticed and have grouped with the lower qualities informing their subjective mind and subconscious mind theories is the spiritual mind. Principle of the yogis. With the difference that the spiritual mind has additional properties and qualities of which the Western theorists have never dreamed. As we touch upon each of these three mental principles, you will see the points of resemblance and the points of difference between the yogi teachings and Western theories. We wish distinctly, we wish it distinctly understood however, that we do not desire to detract from the praise justly earned by these Western investigators. In fact, the yogis owe them a debt of gratitude for preparing the Western mind for the fuller teachings. The student who has read the works of the writers referred to will find it very much easier to grasp the idea of the three mental principles in man than if he had never heard of any division in the functioning of the mind of man. Our principal reason for calling attention to the mistake of the Western dual mind theories was that to the mind of the yogi, it is painful to see that which he knows to be the highest manifestation of mind, that which is the seat of inspiration and flashes of genius, that which touches the pure spirit, the spiritual mind, which is just beginning to awaken in men of development and growth, confused and confounded with and placed in the same class with the lowest mental principle, the instinctive mind, which while most necessary and useful to man under the direction of his higher principle is still something which is common to the most undeveloped man, even to the lower form of the animal kingdom, yea, even to the plant life. We trust that the student will free his mind of preconceived ideas on this important subject and will listen to what we say before forming his final opinion. In our next lesson, we will go into detail regarding each of the three mental principles. Chapter two, the second lesson, the mental principles. In our first lesson, we called your attention briefly to the three lower principles of man. I number one, the physical body, number two, the astral body, number three, the prana or vital force. We also led up to the subject of the mental principles, which form the fourth, fifth, and sixth respectively of the seven principles of man. For convenience sake, we will again enumerate the four higher principles. Seven, spirit. Six, spiritual mind. Five, intellect. Four, instinctive mind. This terminology is more or less unsatisfactory, but we adopt it in preference the Sanskrit terms which prove so puzzling and elusive to the average Western student. There are three lower principles. The three lower principles are the most material and the atoms of which they are composed are of course indestructible and go on forever in countless form and aspects. But the principles so far as the ego is concerned are things merely to be used in connection with a particular earth life. Just as man uses clothing, heat, electricity, et cetera, and they form no part of his higher nature. The four higher principles on the contrary go to make up the thinking part of man. The intelligent part, so to speak. Even the lowest of the four, the instinctive mind, goes to form the higher part of the man. Those who have not considered the subject at all are apt to regard as absurd the suggestion that the mind of man functions on more than one plane. Students of psychology however have long recognized the varying phases of mentation. And many theories have been advanced to account for the same. Such students will find that the yogi philosophy alone gives the key to the mystery. Those who have studied the dual mind theories of certain Western writers will also find it easier to conceive of more than one plane of mentality. At first sight, it was seen that the conscious reasoning part of man's mind did the most work of. Did the most work if indeed not all of it. But a little reflection will show us that the conscious reasoning work of the mind is but a small fraction of its task. Man's mind functions on three planes of effort, each plane shading imperceptibly into the planes on each, on either side of it. The one next higher or the one next lower. The students may think of the matter either as one mind functioning along three lines or as three minds shading into each other. Both views have more or less of the truth in them. The real truth is too complex to be considered in detail in an elementary lesson. The principal thing is to get the idea fixed in the mind, to form mental pegs upon which to hang future information. We will touch briefly upon the several minds or planes of mental effort, beginning with the lowest, the instinctive mind. The four, the instinctive mind. This plane of mentation, we share in connection with the lower animals. In at least its lower forms. It is the first plane of mentation reached in the scale of evolution. Its lowest phases are along lines in which consciousness is scarcely evident. And it extends from this lowly place in the scale until it manifests a very high degree of consciousness in comparison with its lowest phases. In fact, when it begins to shade into the fifth principle, it is difficult to distinguish it from the lowest forms of the latter. The first dawn of the instinctive mind may be seen even in the mineral kingdom, more particularly in crystals, et cetera. Then in the plant kingdom, it grows more distinct and higher in the scale. Some of the higher families of plants showing even a rudimentary form of consciousness. Then in the world of the lower animals are seen increasing manifestations of the instinctive mind from the almost plant-like intelligence to the lower forms until we reach a degree almost equal to that in the lowest form of human life. Then among men, we see it shading gradually into the fifth prin- fifth principle, the intellect. Until in the highest form of man today, we see the fifth principle, intellect, in control to a certain extent and subordinating the fourth principle to it, either wisely or unwisely. But remember this, that even the highest form of man carries about with him the fourth principle, the instinctive mind, and in varying degrees uses it or is used by it. The instinctive mind is most useful to man in this stage of his development. He could not exist as a physical being without it, in fact, and he may make a most valuable servant of it if he understands it. But woe to him if he allows it to remain. But woe to him if he allows it to remain in control or to usurp. Prerogatives belonging to its higher brother. Now, right here, we must call your attention to the fact that man is still a growing creature. He is not the finished product by any means. He has reached his present stage of growth after a toilsome journey, but it is merely sunrise yet. And the full day is far off. The fifth principle, the intellect. Has unfolded to a certain degree, particularly. In the more advanced men of today, but the unfoldment is merely beginning with many. Many men are but little more than animals. And their minds function almost entirely upon the instinctive plane. And all men of today, with the exceptions of a very few highly developed individuals. Have need to be on guard lest the instinctive mind does not occasionally unduly. Unsert its power over them. When they are off their guard. The lowest phase of the work of the instinctive mind is akin. To the same work manifesting in the plant kingdom. The work of our bodies is performed by this part of the mind. The constant work of repair, replacement, change, digestion, acclimation, elimination, etc. Is being performed by this part of the mind. All below the plane of consciousness. The wondrous work of the body in health and sickness. Is faithfully carried on by this part of our minds, all without our conscious knowledge. The intelligent work of every organ, part and cell of the body is under the super. Intendence of this part of the mind. Read in science of breadth of the marvelous process of the circulation of the blood. Its purification, etc., and realize faintly what a wonderful work is even. This lowest phase of the instinctive mind. We will show more of its workings in our forthcoming work, Hatha Yoga. But any school. Physiology will give you a clear idea of what it does, although its writer does not tell the cause behind it. This part of the work of the instinctive mind is well performed in the lower animals, plants and in man. Until the latter begins to unfold a little intellect. Then he often begins to meddle with the work properly belonging to this plane of the mind. And sends to it adverse suggestions, fear thoughts, etc. However, this trouble is but temporary, as when the intellect unfolds a little further. It sees the error into which it has fallen and proceeds to rectify the trouble. And to prevent its reoccurrence. But this is only a part of the providence of the instinctive mind. As the animal progressed along the scales of evolution. Certain things became necessary for its protection and well-being. It could not reason on these things, so that wonderful intelligence dwelling, subconsciously. In the instinctive mind unfolded until it was able to grasp the situation and meet it. It aroused the fighting instinct. In the brute for its preservation. And this action of the instinctive mind, very good for its purpose and essential to the preservation of the life of the animal. Is still with us and occasionally projects itself into our mentality with a surprising degree of strength. There is a great deal of the old animal fighting spirit in us yet. Although we have managed to control it and to hold it in restraint. Thanks to the light obtained from our unfolding higher faculties. Instinctive mind also taught the animal how to build its nest. How to migrate before approaching winter, how to hibernate. And thousands of other things well known to students of natural history. And it teaches us how to do the many things which you perform instinctively. And it also assumes tasks which we learn how to perform by means of our intellect. And which we pass on to the instinctive mind, which afterward performs them automatically or nearly so. It is astonishing how many of our daily tasks are performed under the direction of our instinctive mind. Subject merely to a casual provision of the intellect. When we are learning to do things by heart. We have really mastered them on the intellectual plane. And then pass them on to the instinctive plane of mentation. The women, the woman with her sewing machine. The man who runs his engine. The painter with his brush, all find the instinctive mind a good friend. In fact, the intellect would soon tire if it had these everyday tasks to perform. Note the difference between learning to do a thing and then doing it after it has been learned. These manifestations of the instinctive mind are of course among its higher phases. It are due largely to its contact with and blending with the unfolding intellect. The instinctive mind. Is also the habit mind. The intellect, either that of the owner of the instinctive mind or of some other man, passes on ideas to it. Which it afterward faithfully carries out to the letter. Unless corrected or given better instructions or worse ones by the intellect of someone. The instinctive mind is a queer storehouse. It is full of things received from a variety of sources. It contains many things which it has received through heredity. Other things which have unfolded within it. The seeds of which were sown at the time of the primal impulse which started life along the path. Other things which it has received from the intellect, including suggestions from others. As well as thought waves sent out from the minds of others, which have taken lodgment within its corridors. All sorts of foolishness as well as wisdom is there. We will deal with this phase of the subject in future lessons, under the head of suggestion and auto suggestion, thought power, etc. Instinctive mind manifests varying degrees of consciousness, varying from almost absolute subconsciousness. To the simple consciousness. Of the highest of the lower animals and the lower forms of man. Self-consciousness comes to man with the unfoldment of the intellect and will be spoken of in its proper place. Cosmic or universal consciousness comes from the unfoldment of the spiritual mind and will be touched upon later on. This gradual growth of consciousness is a most interesting and important branch of the subject before us. And will be referred to and spoken of at different points in this course. Before we pass on to the next principle. We must call your attention to the fact that the instinctive mind is the seat of the appetites, passions, desires. Instincts, sensations, feelings and emotions of the lower order. Manifested in man as well as in the lower animals. There are of course higher ideas, emotions, aspirations and desires, reaching the advanced man. From the unfolding spiritual mind. But the animal desires and the ordinary feelings, emotions, etc. belong to the instinctive mind. All the feelings belonging to our passion and emotional nature belong to this plane. All animal desires such as hunger and thirst, sexual desires on the physical plane, all passions. Such as physical love, hatred, envy, malice, jealousy, revenge are all part of it. The desire for the physical unless as a means of reaching higher things and the longing for the material. All belong to this plane. The lust of the flesh, lust of the eyes, the pride of life are on this plane. This principle is the most material of the three mental principles. And is the one which is apt to bind us. The closest to the earth and earthly things. Remember that we are not condemning material or earthly things, they are all right in their place. But man in his unfoldment grows to see these things as only a means to an end. Only a step in the spiritual evolution. And with clearer vision, he ceases to be bound too tightly to the material side of life. And instead of regarding it as the end and aim of all things, sees that it is. At the best. Only a means to a higher end. Many of the brute instincts are still with us. And are much in evidence in undeveloped people. Occultists learn to curb and control these lower instincts and to subordinate. Them to the higher mental ideals which open up to them. Be not discouraged, dear student. If you find much of the animal still within you. It is no sign of badness or evil. In fact, the recognition of it by one is a sign that his unfoldment has begun. For before, the same thing was there and not recognized for what it is. Whereas now, it is both seen and recognized. Knowledge is power. Learn to know the remnants of the brute nature within you and become a tamer of wild beasts. The higher principles will always obtain the mastery. But patience, perseverance and faith are required for the task. These brute things were all right in their time. The animal had need of them. They were good. For the purpose intended. But now that the man is reaching the higher points on the path, he sees clearer and learns. To subordinate the lower parts of himself to the higher. The lower instincts were not implanted in your nature by the devil. You came by them honestly. They came in the process of evolution as a proper and right thing. But have been largely outgrown and can now be left behind. So do not fear these inheritances from the past. You can put them aside or subordinate them to higher things as you journey along the path. Do not despise them. Though you tread them underfoot, they are the steps upon which you have reached your present high estate. And upon which you will attain still greater heights. Number five, the intellect. We now reach the mental principle which distinguishes man from the brute. The first four principles man shares in common with the lower forms of life. But when the fifth principle begins to unfold, he has reached an important stage of the journey along the path of attainment. He feels his manhood manifesting within him. Now remember that there is no violent change or marked transition. From the consciousness of the fourth principle. Into that of the fifth. As we have before explained, these principles shade into each other. And blend as to the colors of the spectrum. As intellect unfolds, it illuminates faintly the fourth principle. And endows instinctive life with reason. Simple consciousness shades into self-consciousness. Before the fifth principle dawns fairly. The creature having the four principles well developed has passions but no reason. Emotions but no intellect. Desires but no rationalized will. It is the subject awaiting the monarch. The sleeper awaiting the magic touch of the one who has been sent to awaken him from the enchanter's deep sleep. It is the brute awaiting the coming of that which will transform into a man. In some of the lower animals, the fourth principle has attracted to itself the lowest shading of the fifth principle. And the animal manifests signs of a faint reasoning. On the other hand, in some of the lower forms of man, the bushman for example. The fourth principle has scarcely been perceptibly colored by the incoming fifth principle. And the man is scarcely more than a brute. In fact, is more of a brute mentally. Than some of the higher domesticated animals who, having been for many generations in close companionship with man. Have been colored by his mental emanations. The first sign of the real unfoldment of the fifth principle intellect is the dawning of self-consciousness. In order more fully to understand this, let us consider what consciousness really is. Among the lower animals, there is very little of that which we call consciousness. The consciousness of the lower animal forms is but little more than mere sensation. Life in the early stages is almost automatic. The mentation is almost entirely along subconscious lines. And the mentation itself is only that which is concerned with the physical life of the animal. The satisfaction of his primitive wants. After a bit, this primitive consciousness developed into what psychologists term simple consciousness. Simple consciousness is an awareness of outside things. A perception and recognition of things other than the inner self. The conscious attention is turned outward. The animal or the lower order of man cannot think of his hopes and fears, his aspirations, his plans. His thoughts and then compare them with the like thoughts of others of his kind. He cannot turn his gaze inward and speculate upon abstract things. He simply takes things for granted and asks no questions. He does not attempt to find solutions for questions within himself. Or he is not aware that such questions exist. With the advent of self-consciousness, man begins to form a conception of the eye. He begins to compare himself with others and to reason about it. He takes mental stock and draws conclusions from what he finds in his mind. He begins to think for himself, to analyze, classify, separate, deduce, etc. As he progresses, he begins to think out things for himself. And passes along new and fresh suggestions to his instinctive mind. He begins to rely upon his own mind rather than blindly accepting that which emanates from the mind of others. He begins to create for himself and is no longer a mere mental automaton. And from a mere glimmering of conscious intelligence, there has grown the highest intelligence of today. A modern writer forcibly expresses the growth in the following words. For some hundreds of years, upon the general plane of consciousness, an ascent to the human eye gradually. But from the point of view of cosmic evolution rapid, has been made. In a race, large-brained, walking erect. Gregarious, brutal, but king of all other brutes. Man in appearance, but not in fact. Was from the highest simple consciousness born the basic human faculty, self-consciousness. And its twin, language. From these and what went with these. Through suffering, toil and war, through bestiality, savagery, barbarism. Through slavery, greed, effort. Through conquest infinite, through defeats overwhelming. Through struggle unending. Through ages of aimless semi-brutal existence. Through subsistence on berries and roots. The use of the casually found stone or stick. Through life in deep forests with nuts and seeds and on the shores of waters with mollusks, crustaceans. And fish for food. through that greatest perhaps of human victories, the domestication and subjugation of fire, through the invention of art of bow and arrow, through the taming of animals and the breaking of them to labor, through the long learning which led to the cultivation of the soil, through the adobe brick and the building of houses therefrom, through the smelting of metals and the slow birth of the arts which rest upon these, the slow making of alphabets and the evolution of the written word. In short, through thousands of centuries of human life, of human aspiration, of human growth, sprang the world of men and women as it stands before us and within us today with all its achievements and possessions. Self-consciousness is a thing easy to comprehend but difficult to define. One writer has expressed it well when he says that without self-consciousness, a creature may know, but only by the aid of self-consciousness is it possible for him to know that he knows. And with this unfoldment of the intellect came the beginnings of all the wonderful achievements of the human mind of today. But great as are these achievements, these are nothing to what is yet before the race. From victory on to victory will the intelligent progress in its unfoldment, as it begins to receive more and more light from the next highest principle, the spiritual mind. It will achieve things as yet undreamed of. And yet, poor mortal, remember, intellect is third from the highest in the scale of the principles of man. There are two principles as much higher than intellect, as intellect is higher than the principle below, instinctive mind. Do not make a god of intellect. Do not allow the pride of intellect to blind you. The importance of the awakening of self-consciousness may be more clearly recognized when we tell you that the occult doctrine is that once the self-consciousness is awakened into being, once the I has been felt and recognized, the real awakened life of the soul begins. We do not refer to the life that comes after the spiritual awakening. That is still, that is a still higher stage, but to the mental awakening of the soul to that I consciousness. This is the stage where the baby ego first begins its waking existence. Previous to that time, it has slumbered on, alive but not conscious of itself. And now the time of labor pains and birth is at hand. The soul has to meet new conditions. It has many and obstacle to overcome before it reaches spiritual manhood. Many experiences will it undergo, many trials will it be forced to meet, but still the progress is on and on and on. At times, there may be setbacks and it may even seem to retrograde. But such obstacles are soon surmounted and the soul takes up its journey again. There is no real going backward on the path and slow as the progress may seem, each of us is moving steadily forward. We had hoped to be able to reach the subject of the sixth principle, spiritual mind, in this lesson, but we see that we have not sufficient space at our disposal. So we must defer that most interesting subject as well as that of the seventh principle, spirit, until the next lesson. We are aware that our students are eager to press forward and we are wasting as little time as possible on the way. But there are certain fundamental truths which must be clearly understood before we take another step. There are a number of lessons to be drawn from the subjects of the instinctive mind and the intellect and this is as good a place as any in which to consider them. One of these lessons is that the awakening of intellect does not necessarily make the creature a better being in the sense of being good. While it is true that an unfolding principle or faculty will give an upward tendency to man, it is equally true that some men are so closely wrapped in the folds of the animal sheep, so steeped in the material side of things, that the awakened intellect only tends to give them increased powers to gratify their low desires and inclinations. Man, if he chooses, may excel the beast in bestiality and may descend to depths of which the beast would have never thought. The beast is governed solely by instinct and his actions, so prompted, are perfectly natural and proper and the animal is not blamed for following the impulse of its nature. But man, in whom intellect has unfolded, knows that it is contrary to his highest nature to descend to the level of the beast, yea, lower by far. He adds to the brute desires the cunning and intelligence which have come to him and deliberately prostitutes his higher principle to the task of carrying out the magnified animal propensities. Very few animals abuse their desires. It is left for some men to do so. The higher the degree of intellect unfolded in man, the greater the depths of those passions, appetites, and desires possible to him. He actually creates new brute desires or rather builds edifices of his own upon the brute foundations. It's necessary for us to state that all occultists know that such a course will bring certain consequences in its train, which will result in the soul having to spend many weary years in retracing its steps over the backward road it has trodden. Its progress has been retarded and it will be compelled to re-travel the road to freedom in common with the beasts like natures of undeveloped creatures whose proper state of the journey it is, having an additional burden in the shape of the horror of consciousness of its surroundings, whereas its companions have no such consciousness and consequently suffer not. If you can imagine a civilized, refined man having to live among Australian bushmen for many years with a full recollection of what he has lost, you may form a faint idea of the fate in store for one who deliberately sinks his higher powers to the accomplishment of low ends and desires. But even for such a soul, there is escape in time. Let your higher nature be on guard and refuse to be drawn back into the brute life which has been passed through. Keep your gaze upward and let your lot and let your motto be forward. The brute nature may exert a pull downward, but the spiritual mind will give you a helping hand and will sustain you if you but trust to it. The intellect is between the two and may be influenced by either or both. Take your choice, oh struggling soul. Your help is within you. Look at it and refuse to be dragged back into the mire of the animal mind. Manifest the I within you and be strong. You are an immortal soul and are moving on and on and on to still greater things. Peace be yours.
Alright, I think that is a good place for us to stop today. Thus concludes today's study sessions of chapters one and two of the fourteen lessons of Yogi philosophy and occult psychology by Yogi Ramachakha. You can download a copy of the text for free on the mysticknowledge.org website under ebook library dash one link. You see Yogi Ramachakha there and it is the second text listed there. Thank you very much for your attendance and I will see you next time.